All right. Taking roll call, Ms. Toll? You say here. Ms. Yates?
Here.
Mr. Seawright?
Here.
Vice Chair Medson?
Here.
And Christina Robertson Gardner's staff.
Okay. So discussion items, let's look at item one, reformatting design guidelines for alterations to historic buildings.
If possible, yeah, we, I didn't put it on there, but we can do items not on the agenda and then we can bring these gentlemen up and they won't have to wait the whole work session. I know Mr. Edgar's here and he has a handout and he'd like to take some time to talk to the board and ask for direction. So if I could bring Mr. Edgar up? Did you get this?
Good evening.
Yes.
Thank you. Paul Edgar, Kanema Neighborhood Association. What you, I've given to you is just a simple letter coming from the Neighborhood Association, which represents, besides the neighborhood, the historic, the National Register Historic District of Kanema. We believe that the Kanema Cemetery Road and the cemetery in itself is very, very important to the history of Oregon City, the nation, and just literally everything. Because when we take a look at a map that we, it's listed on the Clackamas County website showing the Hudson Bay map, John McLaughlin apparently came in and had people survey Oregon City before Oregon became a, effectively a US possession. He was trying to establish what they were going to do, the British and the Hudson Bay Company. And in this map, it shows the downtown Oregon City and it shows a road on this middle bluff leaving Oregon City, going right through Kanema, right through to the cemetery, and that was the road.
The wagon road.
The "the wagon road" out of Oregon City, leading people out. And it transitions, when you take a look at the map, you see where it comes up and it kind of, it looks like it's about where Center Street is, and then it takes, then it drops off and it starts circling, going straight below the upper bluff and above the rock face that went straight down to the, basically to the water, and they had to get around it. So why did it go that way? Because it was the native road. It was a game road. But this is where we had this huge native encampments all along this middle bluff where they could, where they came in from California everywhere, and then they would come in and camp right there. And these were not friendly people, one to another.
Did they come in to fish?
They came in to fish and gather sustus, sustus, excuse me.
Sustus.
To camus. There were ovens out there where they, where they gathered it and cured it, baked it. But they lived there, and with the advent of the white man's diseases, they died there by the tens of thousands. They put their bodies on the platforms, let their spirits rise, kicked them off, put another one there because when they were dying in, in certain times, there could be a thousand a month, people dying right there in Kanema, right along that ridge. So it was because we wiped out, you know, 10, 15,000 in a year. So spiritually, for if you were a Native American, this is a big deal. It's because that, their spirits forever are connected to the, to the Kanema Bluff and through this land. But when the white man came in, in the droves, they were finding their way out. So they came through Kanema, there wasn't many natives there left, and this was their roads, their trails, and they went through there, and it was truly an extension of the Oregon Trail. Well, it's in an urban setting, it's in pretty good shape, considering.
What's the surface?
Gravel. It was unfortunately graded by Metro when they were doing logging a few years back. We stopped them before they got, did any more damage because they didn't really know. They're environmentalists. They just, far as history, that was never part of their worry to try to even understand any part of it. But there are some of us that do care. I happen to be one of them. And so we got to their attention, we stopped them, but now they've got a plan. They want to go back and log off another 150 trees below the cemetery road and some above it. And doing that, the last time they did it, with these log trucks and the big skitters and all the other stuff, they permanently altered the road. It's in a matter that was really, in my mind, unacceptable.
Well, if they permanently altered it, then why is it necessary?
It's because it's still, they could only, we stopped them before they went crazy.
How did you stop them?
I went to the executive director of natural parks for, natural areas for Metro and had a two-hour sit-down with him, and we came to a, an agreement that he would bring it to an end immediately. He did. He was sorry, you know, that it ended up that we, they got rid of the naturalist that was in there making the recommendations. But they did everything, they put dirt back over the road, letting grass kind of grow back up on it. So they tried to, they were, they tried as desperately as they could to help us. But now they've got, we're into what we'll call Phase Two. They bought a lot more land now along Kanema Ridge, all the way down and around the bowl. And they want to come up where ODOT has a right-of-way on the other side of Kanema. They have stuff, there's a, there's a log road that went up into there, and they want to improve that log road up, and they'll go up and behind the cemetery, and then they want to loop down and come back around, create a new road off of that that connects on to a kind of an old spur road, and then it comes right back down to the Kanema Cemetery Road. And in doing this, when they do this, they're saying this is all for logging and fire protection. I, I can go along a little of it. They want to restore the prairie feel, they want to, is very important stand of white oak and medrone along the bluff, and this is important for bird habitat. But they're, they're altering some of the, of this road and the trees and things which were there during the times of 17, 18, 19 hundreds. They want to bring it to a, to some other period. Well, I'm not here to argue about all of their logging or what they want to do in that regard. I'm here to, about, I don't want them to damage this important historic road and the cemetery.
Is it a tourist attraction?
Yes, it is.
Does it have, does it have plates?
It has signage and everything, yes. In fact, recently, City Commissioner Rocky Smith asked me to take a tour of people out there. I had 40 people out there a couple of weeks ago, along through the whole road, along through the bluff and everything out through there. And this was all part of just attempting to try to open it up and explain it to people. And I, it was amazing how everybody was excited about not only the story of Kanema, the road, the cemetery, and everything about it. It was, it was a good effort. He was very happy. He was, he was, he couldn't believe how everybody responded to just this opportunity to see it. But we believe that it really should have historic landmark status. And so in order to do that, it's like you gotta tell the story, you gotta bring, get the facts together, everything has got to make sense, it's gotta, it's gotta, it's got to equate out.
Right.
Does it, or does it not? And if it does, then maybe this is a time for us to take that effort and identify, get it all out in the, in the open and say, yes, it's, it warrants it.
Is that within our wherewithal to do that?
Yeah, and I can talk when Paul's done.
And so that's, that's officially and formally what the Kanema Neighborhood Association is asking for. It's asking for, for, to begin the process.
Paul, has there ever been an archaeological survey in that area?
There's been some, but I was up-
Seriously, I mean, has there been an official survey?
Yeah, yeah. By the way, this is, this whole area is the, was the Hedges Donation Land Claim.
And we have-
Here. Two Hedges.
What's that?
These are, these are, come on up.
Can I ask you two questions first? Do you mind sitting back down here in front of the mic?
Go ahead.
So the, the trees in that area are actually 100 to 300 years old?
No.
Or have they been logged?
No, they've been, the oak trees are, there are some old oak trees. When I say old, they grow, those white oaks really grow slowly. And so when you go out there, there are some that would, that I could turn around and say are probably 150 years old.
Okay, but the majority of them have been logged in the past?
Yeah, majority of this stuff, all of the Doug firs and stuff like this, a lot of this stuff that's coming back in, you can see the stumps from when it was logged.
And when was that?
I have pictures of that.
I guess my, my question was referring to, he was indicating how far back the area-
When they logged it, they never went in on the Kanema-
How long ago was that?
I'm going to say my, my father-in-law was with Crown Zeller back, and he was a master's degree in forestry from Oregon State. He did the original cruising of that timber before it was cut. And that was done, it was done right around in the 1930s.
That was probably the second or third cut.
But at that time, they, and they created a log road that came in out of Fifth Place that went up into that, and then the other road came in out of, out of there. But they never used the Kanema Cemetery Road because that was owned, indebted to the Kanema Cemetery Association.
And it's not new?
It's still it.
It's still it. And the use of the Metro, should I be on?
Yeah.
Yes, you should.
Did you finish your question?
By the, this is David Hedges and his family are the, and Cap Hedges. They are from the original Hedges family, and it's his great-great-grandfather.
No, my great-great-uncle came out, he was the one who founded Kanema and, I shouldn't say "our." And his brother, Joseph, came out in 1852 and helped build Kanema and did a number of other things such as supervised construction of the locks. And, I mean, he was quite active in the community. Also was a mortician for a while because as a carpenter, that's, that job fell to them. So-
One of the qualities which you need to have.
I wanted to, to talk about the archaeological missteps of Metro and going back to 1997 when the developer was planning to put 136 houses in there. And he hired an archaeologist who is like some doctors. He's hired to come in and find nothing but to testify that, to that fact that he didn't find anything. And the, and so, of course, the developer was shot down, and I can go into detail on that if you're interested, but it's, when Metro started clearing in 2007, I saw looters.
Did they use that road without permission?
No, they got permission from the Cemetery Association, but it's not legal. It violates Oregon State law. And, but-
Could you explain that a little bit more?
Yeah.
Explain that a little bit more. I didn't, I don't get it.
Oh, okay. ORS 97440 stipulates that cemetery property can be used only for cemetery purposes unless there are three public hearings before the county commission. And so without informing anyone, the Cemetery Association signed a contract deeding the land to the developer for $13,000 and $5,000 in no strings attached money, whatever that meant, but it was in the contract.
What year was, what year was that?
That was 2000, I mean, 1997. And so anyway, the, when Metro started clearing in 2007, I had my family up there for a picnic and we saw looters. And this was after Metro had scraped clean the lower portion below the road. And so I called.
What were they looting?
What's that?
What was there to loot? What were they looting?
Artifacts. I'll get to that in a minute. So I called Jim Morgan, who's the person that, that got fired, and I said, "There's looting going on. I want you to, you know, take steps to stop it." And nothing was done for the better part of a year. So the bluff was cleared and it was left wide open. Well, what is there? There are a number of very, very important archaeological sites. There were artifacts that probably are no longer there because it was exposed for all that time and, so they agreed verbally, and I think you may have been in on this, that they would do a survey, not a complete survey, but no survey had been done before. This was the question I had for Metro. Did you have an archaeologist on site? Did you do a survey? Did you inform the Confederated Tribes so that they could get involved? And none of that happened. None of that happened until after they had logged. When I went to the Confederated Tribes and told them what had happened, I went to the Cascade Geographic Society and got them to, informed them and got them involved. And, and these people had been involved in 97 when the developer was, was going in there. And just, none of their testimony counted. But that testimony can count today because it's in the city's records. And the hearing before the city commission on May 9th, I think, it's close, close to that, 1997, has testimony from tribal members and from the Cascade Geographic Society saying that road had been used for thousands of years.
There's no Indian burial grounds up there though, right?
There is.
There is. Is that where the cemetery is?
Yes, it's close.
But it's, they, they were buried everywhere because they were just dying everywhere.
Gentlemen? Do you have specific knowledge of burial grounds?
I'm sorry, can you answer that? I was going to say we're going to give maybe three more minutes to public comments.
Okay, well, we didn't come here to talk. We actually thought we were off the agenda, and so we brought you a letter explaining.
Our request is that we be placed on the agenda next week in order to present what we, excuse me, I'll let it-
Okay.
Cap Hedges or John Hedges. And our request, and we have a letter for each of you, is that we have a place in next meeting's agenda so that we can present to you more formally what we have to show you to help, provide you with historical fact and resources to help make a judgment in proceeding towards working to create a landmark, historic landmark, out of the road and cemetery.
Okay, I think that's fair.
That's the only reason we're here.
Not necessarily. We can put it on the agenda. Yeah, and I have some comments I can add and then give an update with Brian Vaughn, who's actually, we're trying to schedule for the April meeting at Metro, so I think that's a perfect dovetail, because he's going to be doing his presentation that night. So that's actually quite perfect.
That is.
Okay.
It's the fourth Tuesday of April.
Fourth Tuesday.
Oh, fourth Tuesday, oh.
When you gentlemen come back, it would be really interesting to know exactly what area you're proposing the moratorium on, how large that is, who owns it.
Be good to have a map showing-
Any archaeological information you have on that. It's, it's obvious that it's been used for a long period of time, but any specific information you have regarding that would be great.
The, one more thing on the archaeology. After all of this was done, the logging and so forth, there was an article in the Oregonian in which Jim Desmond of Metro was quoted as saying they were going to do everything they could to protect after all the damage had been done and the, and the looting and so forth, and said that he wanted to restore the bluff to how it looked 150 years ago.
Restore the road, too.
Restore the road, yeah. But he, 150 years ago, it had old road timber on it, and, not timber, trees, I'm sorry. And it was, it was a forest, not a, an oak savanna, and they want to change it into what it was like 10,000 years ago, not what it was like 150 years ago.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. I think we will, we will put that on the agenda for next, next month.
By the way, I, I also walked that with the native leaders out of, that came in and walked it. My wife is, is half, her grandfather was half-Nesper.
Is this the same?
And because of that, they would talk to my wife, but they wouldn't talk to me. And they took, took my wife in and showed us ovens.
Perhaps you can get testimonies from some of the tribes that you could bring as well.
So my wife then showed me some stuff, but I want to tell you, yeah, it's, it's there. I've, I've had some very substantial native leaders take me through and guide me through the whole parcel.
Okay, and I think we all agree that it is worthy of some attention, but we expect-
I know.
Thank you very much.
My only problem, I go, I'm going to the doctor on the 5th to find out when he wants to operate on me.
Okay, good luck.
I hope it doesn't prevent me from being here because I'm loaded with information. I've been studying this and got documents for all sorts of things.
Thank you.
If we can request following month, I guess, it may answer.
Whatever works with your timeline.
Yeah. I just know Brian Vaughn is tentatively set for, at Metro to make his presentation in April.
Okay, and so you guys should really consider next month.
Regarding this? Just real briefly, for the record, I wanted to give my two-minute overview on the issues that I know.
Please do.
Okay. This did come up last time in 2007 when Metro worked, had their, their tree removal plan. The crux of the issue is there's really no historic review board, current historic review board authority over the cemetery road, which is actually a flag of a private lot. It's actually a private driveway in a legal sense. It's on a flag lot, and the road is the pull portion of the flag lot that ends at Fifth. So, and then Metro is on either side. So Metro had a private agreement with the Cemetery Association to utilize that road. There are some ORSs that do play into the fact that Metro is a public body that, that owns property on either side. So ORS 358, which we've talked before on other aspects where a, a public body needs to protect historic resources. So that's always out there, and that was discussed last time. The historic review board sent a letter to Metro recommending that they investigate further their obligations, but there's no authority that this board has over the road today. But I know Brian Vaughn has been more involved in the historic aspect. He's, he's the project manager and they have done some additional research since the last, so he'll be able to speak to that at the meeting next month, I believe. And one more, and the fact that, oh, the other thing is, so the, the legal issue of making a moratorium or a landmark, it comes down to the owner of the, of the road, which is the Cemetery Association, and bringing them on board with the landmark status because it takes owner consent to be a, to be a local landmark. So that's, that's really the crux of the issue is, you know, if they want, if they were supportive of it and they wanted to be a local landmark and there could be money to be found to do research, I mean, I see a, a path to get to some type of recognition for local review, but you need owner consent in Oregon. So it's have a heartier conversation with the Cemetery Association because a lot of it lies within their, their authority.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So does that mean we shouldn't entertain?
Or maybe they could bring them at the meeting.
Something unless they get the consent of the landowner?
You know, it's background information. Brian's going to be doing the presentation, it's kind of the board, how much time they want to give to these gentlemen. A lot of it, last time we discussed with the goals, is that we do know some information about the road, but in order to move forward with, with any type of designation, be it local or above, additional research has to be done and who's going to pay for it. And that's kind of the big crux of the other issue. It's like getting the property owners to sign on and getting someone to pay for additional research that, that can be gone through a formal process, I think is the two.
I have a question.
I'm sorry. If we could defer that until we actually meet on that, thank you.
Well, she said something that-
If you want, you can give me a call tomorrow. I'm at my office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
So what's the status of this board in relationship to all of this?
Well, you know, you, you have two hats. In some sense, you have, you have the regulatory hat, which is, I own a historic building and I want to make an alteration and per 1740, I have to go in front of you. But you also have kind of the advise and advise to the city commission on matters of historic importance. So, you know, you can, you can decide, is this an issue that the historic review board wants to take up with the city commission because they believe, you know, further action can be done, or this is something that we want to continue using, ask for city resources for, you know? That's a discussion you can bring to the city commission if you want to move forward on it. But it's really an advice to the city commission because you don't, you don't have any regulatory authority until such time that the Cemetery Association wants to provide owner consent for any future designation. Or, but you could also do what we did in 2007, which was send a letter to Metro just reiterating that they continue to go through the process, formal process, and make sure they're, they believe they're meeting their ORS 358. They already are in consultation with shipboat, but, you know, sometimes just sending an official letter is helpful because it kind of dots our eyes. We can do that if that's, because all we're doing is just encouraging them to, you know, meet their requirements, which is we did back then. So, I mean, there's things that we can do, but there's no, I don't really see a path to a moratorium or any type of designation until such time the association wants to move forward.
Agreed. And I think we should be considerate to the landowner and should have the cemetery's buy-in and get their feedback as well as some involvement. We should probably move on to the first item on our agenda.
Yes. All right. So Diana Painter and her many items for future work had one that I kind of grabbed on to and is on our work program, and that is taking- and is on our work program, and that is taking our two adopted design guidelines for exterior alteration and addition, which is the Secretary of Interior standard, which we adopted, and then our own Oregon City Design Guidelines for alterations in addition. What she said is, having them separate was confusing, and she wanted to see, she thought having them in one document, so you could give to an applicant and say, these are your regulatory review guidelines, and this is what we're going to use to review your property. So what I did is, and this is a draft, and the goal tonight is to talk in general, give further direction, and send me any, you know, edits or comments offline that I can collect, and not tonight, but the goal is to, is this the right direction you want to go in for formatting, and is this something you want to do where we just are going to be reformatting the adopted guidelines, or do you want to look into amending them? So you either be adding, subtracting, or amending a particular guideline. So right here is just a reformatting of already existing approved guidelines that have gone through the historic review board, in a prettier package.
So is the first page, the introduction, potential archaeological resources and how to use this document, is that already existing in the exact same wording?
No, no, so the first page is new wording.
Because that's the only place I had comments.
Yeah, so that's the new wording, just try to give people context of what they're using, so yeah, this, the first page is definitely one to send comments back online. And basically, page one and two is my writing, to try to help orientate people to the purpose of the document. And then we go into, page three is the Secretary of Interior standards, one through 10, and then page four and five are what I'm calling our Oregon City specific guidelines. And then what I did is I separated out the Oregon City Guidelines actually into three, I'm calling them material guidelines. If you remember the old packet, it had the first, you know, A through F, and then it had just these other tables, so I'm trying, I tried to come up with three titles for them, so I created three. So I am trying to present it as, start with Secretary of Interior standards, which is big picture, nationwide, and then you do Oregon City specific guidelines about context, and then you get down to material comments. And then what I did is, people have asked about the preservation briefs, and I've even alluded to, I just made links to all of the preservation briefs in the back, but indicated that they're not part of the adopted standards, but you could go in and use them for guidance. Because these are 47 briefs that the Park Service has added to over the last 40 years.
And pages four and five are existing texts that have just been reformatted?
Yes, all existing texts, reformatted, correct.
I have a question out of ignorance.
True.
I was interested to read on page four, under the Oregon City Specific Guidelines, under Landscape Number Two, it says inappropriate landscape treatments such as burms and extensive ground cover are discouraged, and I didn't know that extensive ground cover was discouraged.
I think it was like all barkdest or all vinca minor, like one type of.
How about all grass?
Yeah, I think what they're trying to say is having, you know, just taking your historic house and having a mono plant landscape. I mean, the idea is, I think ground cover is, to the, ground cover to the detriment of other shrubs and trees.
Like, it should be appropriate to the timeline of the house?
Yeah, basically, people trying to cheap out and just putting a bunch of knick-knick or vinca minor and calling it a and going home.
Yeah, I had a question on the same one. How are we enforcing that, or is that?
Well, that's the question is, and this is something you, we don't have to decide tonight, this is an ongoing work program, is after maybe spend another month looking at it, do we want to amend past grammatical issues from existing, and if we do, I think we definitely want to bring the neighborhood associations in for a larger discussion, if there's something you definitely want to amend that changes policy. And if you don't, if we're happy with what we have other than either no change or grammatical rewording, which extensively doesn't change the policy, then just, you know, letting the neighbor associations know, but if we do want to make amendments to this, we definitely should bring both the Kenema and the McLaughlin Neighbor Associations involved, like we did in the design guidelines for new construction in 2006.
Well, I know that we, Derek, we did get involved in landscaping on, I don't know if you were on board at that particular time, but when we were talking about that remodel in the neighborhood that is just out of our jurisdiction, just right on the edge of our jurisdiction over there, I'm thinking of the name of the neighborhood, where they were going to take a huge portion, you know, divide.
Oh, yeah, we had two infill lots on a partition, and we used the historic houses way up front, and they had these two.
I know the site you're talking about.
What was the name of the room away?
And so, in that sense, we were looking, the new construction, we were using burms to try to separate out the new construction from, so you're right, this landscape.
It came into play then.
It came into play, and maybe, maybe this is a different word, and this might have been back in a time when you had more people who just thought that they could barkdest their front lawn and call it a day, maybe this was the anti-barkdest code. You know, there was a time when people thought that was an appropriate landscape design choice.
I just wanted to be clarified a little more.
Yeah, and I agree, there might, we might be able to tweak that wording.
And to me, ground cover, I don't consider grass ground cover, to me, grass is grass, although I guess it is ground cover. To me, ground cover are things that you plant, that is low maintenance, that drought resistance, that's, and that's the kind of thing I think people would want to encourage for environmental reasons.
Right, but maybe not monotonous ground cover.
Yes.
And so maybe that is, and maybe we can identify, and maybe one thing we can do is think about how you would reword that sentence, to maybe keep the policy the same, but flesh out, kind of what we're saying is.
Native vegetation appropriate of the time period.
And also, I think the key thing, just like additions, your vegetation should be compatible and not overtake your house. So that's why we don't want a bamboo forest next to a historic home, not necessarily because bamboo's wrong, but the bamboo forest part of it, you know, if you want to plant a little bamboo clove in the back corner of your historic home, that may be just fine.
And vegetation has also been used to mask certain parts of the addition that weren't harmonious to the house.
So that may be, maybe we do want to talk about how landscaping can hurt or aid in thoughtful additions on alteration, so I can take a stab, you guys take a stab if you want to send me.
Should we send you some?
Yeah, send me your favorite.
Comments on?
Comments on that, how you would reword it, how would you take in those.
Is the word extensive used in the, in the original?
Yeah, this is all the original. This is, I just reformatted this. Yeah, this is, and this was adopted beginning, mid 80s, and I'm still, I've said mid 80s because I have to do some research on the exact date, hopefully I'll get it by the time we adopt it, but I put mid 80s for the time being. And then over time, it was amended, so we'll just, we're just continually amending an existing document, and the historic review board actually has the authority to approve guidelines on their own through resolution. We took the design guidelines for new construction up to the city commission, because it was a brand-new document, and these were brand-new, lots of new policies. If we're changing, if all we end up doing is re-clarifying a landscaping comment, we may, we'll just probably adopt it by resolution and make a staff comment at a city commission meeting of work projects, but if we do extensive policy updates, which I don't think we will, but if we ever did, then we would, I'd probably ask to send it up to them, just so they were kept in a loop, and if it ever goes to appeal, they also looked at the guidelines and approved it, so it's also helpful when you have both groups reviewing guidelines that they both approved.
Okay, do we have any other thoughts or comments? Okay, so does that put us to Plan B?
A question, do you feel that there's something missing from our guidelines today? Is there something nagging you that you feel like we need to flesh out more?
I've always thought that they were kind of loose, but I think they're designed to be that way.
And that's it.
And sometimes it bugs me.
But it's that balance of trying to have your guidelines flexible and to have an educated, appointed board, and you marry those two together, and that's the, you know, when we were talking to the Stork Preservation League of Oregon last year, when they did their infill design guidelines packet, that's what they said, is the best is when you have that marriage between the two. You don't want really, really prescriptive ones, because that doesn't work.
Well, I, yeah.
And then you don't want them so loose.
I don't mean it that way, I don't mean I want it, you know, rigid, but I just feel like they're so broad.
You know, I like the flexibility that we have, because I have, I think we've talked about this before, I think I have faith in the board members here, and we have sometimes or on occasion gone outside the guidelines when it made sense to go outside the guidelines, and I don't want to lose that flexibility.
Well, I think you found good findings for the time, and 99% of the time, I agree with you. But yeah, no, I mean, you know, it's key, it's in that, I'm not saying that these, I mean, these are what we have, and we've used them, and we can easily come up with a new set of documents that could be the same or as better, but it's just a new set. They're generally, I mean, this is just another way of talking about the Secretary of Interior standards, but sometimes Secretary of Interior standards are so vague.
They are vague.
And that's why they use the preservation briefs, as, so what they use, those are for when they're doing like a tax credit application, you know, or you're looking, they'll have those ten standards, but then they'll go into the preservation briefs, and they use that for their decision-making. But a lot of, and actually, I think CLDs need to, but most, a lot of jurisdictions have adopted the Secretary of Interior standards, because there's also 40 years of case study, so and a thought process about how those are interpreted, and so you can use background findings and helpfulness from other jurisdictions and other projects, so it's kind of like a case law aspect to it that's helpful. And then, what I like is then we could also then tailor specific situations for our situations. And so that's, that's why these material standards are just material situations that generally come up in Oregon City. We could probably add to some, we could probably subtract some that may not come up that much, but we've just generally had these as our, the ones that are. So if you want, we can move forward with what we have and look at the section on landscaping. Looking through it, nothing came out to me like, oh, we need to add this, or this is a big hole, so I, that's why I came to what we had, which is just a reorganization of them.
Yeah, pretty much. I had a few comments and thoughts that I can send you offline. But, and if you feel that public comment is important for this aspect, you know, definitely we should send out information and ask for feedback before we make those changes.
Okay, well, I don't think we have a specific time, but I think we might have an iteration or two, get a final document, and then sometime this summer, we'll just adopt it by a resolution, and then we'll have a nice new version that the public can utilize.
That sounds great.
All right.
Okay, so May Preservation Month activities.
So you notice you didn't get an email from me yet on the preservation award, and I apologize, you will get that to me. I have three nominations, so I'm going to send those out to you, and then give you a couple days to see if there's any that I missed, and then I'll send out a ballot. One thing I want to talk about tonight, which I think could be a really neat co-sponsored project for Preservation Month, that has a little bit longer life, but the Clackamas Historical Society and Museum of the Oregon Territory is doing some more Eddy work this summer, the photographer Ralph Eddy, who has some beautiful photography of Oregon City, and they already did one, and he has some of these neat kind of photos that aren't just the landscapes, but they'll be like of a different angle of the arch bridge. And so what the Clackamas Historical Society is thinking as an option, maybe we could partner with them for a photo contest, for the community to find hidden gems, because that's the theme of Preservation Month this year, is hidden gems of your city. And so one thought would be, it could kind of be announced in May, but it might go on a month or two, would be sponsoring a photo contest with a prize, hopefully we'll find a good prize, in concert with Clackamas Historical Society, for people to find their hidden gems as part of Preservation Month, and then they would kind of use that also to sponsor the Ralph Eddy exhibit this summer. So I thought that was a really neat, easy, I can help with, I think the city is, community development has offered to help with some mailings, and we can potentially get it into the Summer Trail News and work on some flyers, and it would be, you know, co-sponsored by this Oregon City Historic Review Board and the Clackamas County Historical Society, so that's one option, if we want to be involved in that. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I raised my hand. Can the gems be diamonds in the rough? I mean, can they be like something that looks like if they fixed it up, but really look great?
Yeah, I mean, I think the idea is the theme of Preservation Month this year is hidden gems, so the proclamation.
So they're so hidden that the house is like.
Yeah, but I think it's more of an artistic photo contest, to kind of go with Ralph Eddy, but trying to get kids and adults to turn in historic, and the idea would be to get it more towards built features, hidden gems, historic built features would be the theme, and they might have some categories. And then it would be, probably coincide this summer with the exhibit, and that would be the awarding of the, you know, the two or three prizes based on categories or age or something like that. So I thought that was a pretty easy thing to co-do, and it hit the hidden gems theme.
I think it's a really good idea, and it brings what we do kind of to the community in a really nice way, but my question is, what would sponsorship entail? I mean, is it just our name, or is it worth for us to do?
Some community development funds for helping with mailings, and get one of you guys on the selection committee to choose the photo, what else do you want to be, I mean, yeah, the idea is to coordinate and, you know, get both your logos out on any of the, any of the promotional materials.
And you're talking about mailings to residents?
Well, we think we might be able to get a utility billing stuffer.
Yeah, okay, because.
Which would be fantastic.
Right, that would be great, because I don't think, I don't think we should spend money on postage for something like this.
The payment for the utility billings, the pay to print the utility billing stuffer.
Yeah, that would be great.
It costs about $600, I think, to pay to do the, to print out the, for everybody. So, I might be able to piggyback on another project, so I, this would be on the back and it would be on the front, so maybe no money, but, so that'd be one idea, is to put that money into doing the stuffer. You know, I just don't see anything out there other than another presentation that was really easy, I mean, that was, I think, could fit kind of what our skill set is, so I thought I liked this, and I can continue to flesh it out. It probably wouldn't be, it'd probably be announced in mid-May, probably thinking maybe the second, there's two city commission meetings in May, the first one is the proclamation and the award, and we could potentially announce it that meeting as well, or wait till the second city commission meeting in May and announce it, then as the kickoff announcement and have it, the contest run through till, you know, late June, and that would get school kids still in school, so it could get through the school system, and then, because there'll be a school category.
I think announcing it earlier is better, personally.
Okay.
Yeah, and if we can promote it at the Carnegie Center and some other public locations
and put a poster up on the wall and try and do it expensively.
Do a nice, I mean, we can print color, eight and a half by 11 color prints for all public venues.
The biggest hidden gem now is the arch bridge.
I know. Where is it? I can't find it. So, kind of, and does anybody want to help with that project at all? Anybody want to help me take it on? I'm working with Karen Mori right now at the Clackamas County Heritage, I mean, the Historical Society, but.
I could probably help you.
Okay, I don't know much more, I told her I'd talk to the board tonight, and then get back to her if this was a direction that the board wanted to go to. She emailed me, I think, two weeks ago and said, does anybody want to partner on Preservation Month activities? I said, we may want to, so that was the discussion, was what could both entities do that got our name out, got Preservation Month out, got the things out with, you know, a reasonable amount of effort for the time we have to spend on it, so I thought that sounded pretty good. Okay.
Another subject on houses going into neglect, he's got some pictures to show. Just need to watch, I'm going to flash.
Well, I tell you what, this meeting ends exactly at seven o'clock, if we can run through the last two items, will you? Okay.
Actually, and I have the Armington House update, I don't have much more than I had last month, which is my photi and ARD are continuing to work. She gave us a draft condition analysis showing the existing condition, and she's going to be using that to prepare her proposed rehabilitation plans. So, I, goals maybe go to city commission work session next. So I, goal is maybe go to City Commission work session next month to just give a preliminary presentation, but she probably will not come, she's scheduled to three meeting, we have three public meetings in her scope of work, but probably the board won't be till later because I don't think, right now, it's just a lot of preliminary, and it's, I don't know if, what, she's not really at a position to get any feedback, I think, from the board on this, so.
Sure.
And we'll find out next...
What's that you're talking about?
Oh, my Foti, the architect, I mean, that's been hired to do the rehabilitation plans. We'll also find out in mid-May if the city received the Community Development Block grant, which could be anywhere between $130,000 and $180,000.
Wonderful, wonderful.
So we'll find that out within a month and a half. And Historic Preservation League of Oregon is having their year two of their endangered buildings. They just, I think it just closed, so they'll be working on that. And I will be going to that luncheon. They always have, they're doing luncheons now, and I usually have a guest speaker, you can go, you can go on their website and take a look if you want to pay to go to it, but I'll be out there. And hopefully, I'll be able to announce our lovely Community Development Block grant and how, what a success that program was.
That'd be great, yeah.
They, big supporters of that program, and it really catalyzed, I think, the Armentinger House, so.
And what's the date of that?
I'll have to look up. The, the other date I wanted to give you is a little bit out of order, but the Heritage Conference is scheduled for next month, and it is... April 26th to 28th, so it's the Friday. It's at the Mission Mill, the Ward's Dinner is at the Mission Mill for our Heritage Award. And anybody that wants to go, email me within the next week, and we will get you signed up and pay for you to attend the dinner. And I'm going early to, I haven't been in Mission Mill grounds in a long time, and I might even go to the Bush House and the Deepwater Estate because I haven't seen that in a long time. So anybody who wants can meet me early and do a little tour of those two houses and then go to the dinner. I'm not attending the conference that day, none of the, the items where I think met kind of my background. So I will be at the dinner, so just email me within the next week if you want to go, and we will pay for you.
And HRB work plan?
I just always keep the work plan up every work session, so we don't forget about it. But I don't have any addendums right now.
Does anyone else have any comments over the work plan? All right, we have one minute left for comments.
I came, my name's Howard Poston Kanema. I came a couple of months ago with this question to the board. And Mr. Basinger assured me, this is before you guys, that the house was sold and it was going to be taken care of, but it's fell apart since then. As you can see in the pictures, the roof is gone and the rain's coming in, and it's going to rot and fall apart. So I'm just wondering if the board can, Christine or can do something with this to make the people that own it do something with it before it totally falls apart. My crevice in is downtown, we have the theater, and the county let it go so long that it rotted, and that's why they tore it down, even though it's a historic building. This is not a historic building, but it's in the HRB.
And actually, this is already in demolition by neglect code enforcement. We held off a little bit this year, we thought that it was going to be bought. This is a really, really hard one. If we push really hard, this may be the one building that can meet the findings for demolition. I mean, you know, actually meet the criteria, and they, I've talked to the property owner, they're, they're willing to come in to do the demolition request.
You mean, is that a hidden gem?
So, we, this last year, I've been vastly, and they are, they are in official code enforcement, we have had conversations with them. There has been a couple of people that were about to buy the property, so we held off on the formal action, and it sounds like it's still off again. So we can move forward if we want, just know that it may be the precipice of the demolition application.
This would be a really nice house if it was fixed up.
Could be. You know, with the demolition application, you have to meet the criteria for what was a, was originally approved for integrity, and you, you know, you still can look at extreme economic hardship and extreme building condition. So it's not saying that, you know, just because a building has a little bit of out of rehab work doesn't trigger it, but I'm not a legal attorney, but this is a, this is a great test case to see at what level do you meet the legal threshold of allowing demolition. So I can absolutely move forward with it, I've just been a little wary just because of talking to the property owners, they were ready to move forward with a demolition request if we continued the code enforcement on it.
Any background on the house?
Howard probably has more, but the, the estate owns it of a, of a gentleman who lived in it and passed away, and so the person handling is his estate, who lives out in eastern Oregon, central Oregon, is taking care of it. Hasn't been ha, kind of actively up for sale, not, not strenuously marketed.
But anyway, it's you guys' choice, you can do something with it, make them fix it, or it's going to fall apart.
Okay.
And that's you guys' choice.
I appreciate you bringing that up.
Yeah.
And it sounds like it's more like, let it fall apart or let it be torn down?
But, no, but, or, but, you know, they could potentially not meet the qualifications, and, I mean, I'm just, I'm not saying that there isn't a, we don't know until we go through the process if they meet the criteria. They may be able to, they may not meet the threshold of proof, and the demolition could be denied.
So what happens then?
And then you could move forward and require them to stabilize the building through demolition by neglect.
Okay.
And if that's the case, then you might, you might be able to. It's just been, it's been up for sale so many times in the last year, and I've talked to three different owners that told me that they were about to close. I've just been really wary of putting the gavel down on the code enforcement demolition.
So did we send them a letter?
Yeah, it's officially in code enforcement.
Okay. It seems to me that now it's hard to know the exact condition of the building, what it was like when we sent the letter, but if we had a good idea from some sort of walkthrough of what the condition was then, and we put them on notice, if they don't do anything about it and it gets a lot worse...
I think the roof, we did not get a chance to go inside. I went with Guy Spur on an exterior walkthrough. The, the scene of photos from Howard, the roof has gotten worse, and I think that's an obvious, so that would be a reasonable thing to come back at because we have visible proof of before.
Right. So it seems to me like if you have proof of that, just because it might meet the demolition standard now, we shouldn't let them knock, I mean, they shouldn't be allowed to knock the house down because they let it get worse when we already put them on notice.
So I, you know, if, you know what, we've, we had the board, as part of the demolition neglect has to be brought up to the board, and they have to, they had to sign off to move forward. So that's already on the books, but, I mean, even just a, a motion of vote right now with the quorum to, to recommend a staff to continue the process might be helpful.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
You want a more formal motion? Okay. Well, I don't, I move that staff investigate the demolition by neglect matter at Apperson and 99 South.
Is it 502 McGloughlin? I think it's, it's the Captain Cochran House.
Okay, the Captain Cochran House at Apperson and 99 South.
I second.
All right. Mr. Seawright?
Aye.
Ms. Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Toll?
Aye.
Chair Metzen? Vice Chair Metzen. All right, motion carries, and I will move that as a work item for next month.
I don't know. All right.
All right, all right, so that is what I have.
All right, if, unless there's anything else, we'll close the meeting.
Yep, and I have, Cat Pedges also wrote a letter, I have the original in my file, but he also gave one to everybody, which is different than Mr. Edgar's letter. So I, I have this already in my, in my file.
You called this Captain...
Oh, Captain Cochran House.
And who?
It's a...